Andy Miller.
Elaine Waldo.
Brian Serkmanek.
Cornell Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Bolt Vanderneil. Can I have the motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? And then we're going to remove the February 2nd minutes from the consent agenda. So we'll only have the January 19th minutes on there and we'll discuss those here in just a second. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with just the January 19th?
I make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
opposed? Okay, we are, let's get the minutes out of the way.
Yeah, just a real quick correction. It does say in the minutes that we had consensus for stainless steel toilets. And Catherine did find there's a $17,000 upgrade. The chief was kind enough to find it to note that there hadn't really been any damage to porcelain toilets. So I just would like to say that the consensus was just to approve the green toilets. Leave the other line out if we could.
Sorry, I did update those minutes and take that portion of the minutes.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, I checked with these guys. I'm sorry. Should have checked with the boss, sorry.
Oh, I forwarded her the email.
Okay.
She wasn't happy.
Yeah.
We can now have a motion to approve.
I would move to approve the February 2nd minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Favorite?
Thanks, Alfred.
You're welcome.
We are now at Fraser River Sedimentation presentation by John Ewart.
Hi, thanks for having me. When Ed invited me to either present over Zoom or come to the meeting in person, I jumped at the chance because I don't remember the last time I gave a presentation in person.
All right.
So.
Here or in general?
In general. Let's see. Oh, I need to share my screen. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thanks for having me. As I said, my name is John Ewart. I'm the local fisheries biologist with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about some concerns we have about what's going on with the Fraser River, about this fish right here in particular. That is a modeled sculpin or codis bear dye, if you like Latin names. And I'll come back to that, but just by way of further introduction, explaining who I am and my area of responsibility. I'm the local fisheries biologist for Colorado Parks and Wildlife is divided into 18 administrative areas, kind of akin to counties. They're a little bit larger than individual counties, but each area has an individual office. Our office is down in Hot Sulphur Springs. You may have been there and out of that office, we have an area wildlife manager who's the supervisor for the area. We've got a big game biologist, a handful of wildlife officers that work out of there, property technician that takes care of the state wildlife areas, conservation biologist and a fisheries biologist, which is me and a few other support staff. So my area of responsibility is Area 9, the Hot Sulphur Office or Grand and Summit Counties. And so my charge is to manage the fish populations and all the water bodies in Grand and Summit Counties. Just a little bit of background on the importance of fishing in particular in Grand County, because sometimes I know that people sometimes don't think about it all that much. So just a little bit of foundational information. We do studies, we and other entities do studies from time to time. This is going back to 2000, well, 2008 was when this one was updated, but the actual surveys were done in 2002. So economic impact by county of fishing and hunting. And Grand County came in in $2,002 at $21 million in economic impact. That's direct and secondary. So direct economic impact being a fishing guide being paid to go out and take someone fishing. And then secondary being that guide stopping by City Market on their way home and buying a gallon of milk and a loaf of bread on the way home. That's the secondary impact. So $21 million in 2002 and it certainly has not declined since then. So the point is to say that fishing is very important in Grand County. And I take my charge very seriously because essentially other surveys have shown that fishing is pretty much number two. If you are dividing it into specific activities, fishing is pretty much number two after skiing, right? In Grand County in terms of individual, you know, specific leisure or vacation type of activities. We just did an angler survey that came out just real recently based on a 2019 survey. And Grand County, as far as counties in the state, it ranked just fourth in the state as an angling destination after Jefferson, Laramo and Park. And Jefferson and Laramo are kind of skewed because they're high density counties, but they also have angling destinations in them. And Park County, of course, has South Black River in the South Park Reservoirs. But Grand County is number four, right behind them as far as a destination county for fishing. So another, another reason why fishing is very important in Grand County. So that doesn't come without careful stewardship. Our rivers are healthy for a reason because lots of different entities have put a lot of care into making sure that our rivers are healthy. And one of the things that I am really always very thankful for is the Cousins Ranch Open Space right here. It is the lifeblood of the Fraser River, having that riparian corridor intact and maintained. And that buffer there is hugely important to the ecology of the Fraser River. It's hard to overstate how important it is. You know, when I think of the Fraser River being a small river or large creek really in a, you know, in a town municipality, I think of other places like West Ten Mile Creek and Copper Mountain, the Snake River and Keystone, the Blue River and Breckenridge, Gore Creek and Vale. All of those streams, the ecology, and I work in all those streams on a regular basis. And the ecology of those streams is functioning at a fraction of what the Fraser River has going for. And it's largely because of parcels like the Cousins Ranch Open Space, keeping a riparian area intact and serving as that buffer for the Fraser River. So hugely, hugely important. So we've got nice, large brown trout and rainbow trout in the Fraser River. And coming back to our native species, the sculpin, we would not be able to grow fish beyond about 14 inches long in the Fraser without a vertebrate prey base. That's one reason why sculpin are very, very important. Because brown trout in particular, if they're going to grow beyond 14 inches, they need to switch from eating insects to eating a vertebrate prey. And there are plenty of streams around that are the size of the Fraser River that don't have sculpin populations. And you don't see fish growing to beyond 14 inches. So that's one reason why sculpin are very important. Another reason why sculpin are very important is that they're native species that have never been manipulated, stocked, moved around in any way. They've been there since day one, unlike the trout that we have in our, in our main stem rivers. They're native species. They also are an indicator of habitat health. They live in the little gaps in the, in the riverbed in between among the cobbles down in the bottom of the river. They're kind of a, call them a cryptic species because people can spend their whole lives rooting, rooting around the river, fishing and never even see one because they're very camouflaged and they're very good at hiding. And they spend most of their time down in the riverbed in the gaps in between the cobbles. And that's their habitat. And so if you take that habitat away, they don't have anywhere to live. That habitat also is the same habitat that we need for good production of insects in a riverbed. Just gorgeous fish. Also, well, back to the reason why they're important for our recreational fisheries. We see them very commonly being eaten by brown trout. Brown trout absolutely love these things. They're a real mainstay of the ecology and the food web in the Fraser River, helping maintain our recreational fishery. So we can lose sculpin populations. We can lose them completely. And we've seen that happen in Grand County. The red on this slide indicates that there are few or that there is not a functional sculpin population in that river. And the green indicates places where we have good sculpin populations. And we've seen the sculpin disappear from the main stem Colorado River. And we believe that happened in the years after Windy Gap Reservoir was built. And you cannot find sculpin anywhere in the main stem Colorado River downstream from Windy Gap Reservoir. And that's a pattern that has, that plays out upstream and downstream of impoundments around the county. But we would really like to get them back in the main stem of the Colorado. But the point is you can lose sculpin populations entirely. We've looked and looked and looked for sculpin in the main stem Colorado and they are not there. And we believe that the reason why we don't have sculpin anymore in the main stem of the Colorado is that the river channel was formed by flows that are larger than, that were larger than what occurred there now. And it's so therefore it's oversized and the stream doesn't have the power to keep the riffles, those cobble riffles with the spaces down in the riverbed. The river doesn't have the power anymore to keep those flushed out and keep them clean. And so over the years, fine sediments have settled into those cobble riffles and filled in those spaces, those interstitial spaces where the sculpt, that are the sculpin habitat. And so we don't want to see that happen in other places. The Fraser River has a very robust sculpin population and always has. And it's one of the best things it's got going for it. However, over the past two years, we have had more reports of these events than we've ever in the 15 years that I've been here. And sorry, when I was introducing myself, I was going to mention that I've been in this position since 2007. So 2021 was my 15th season in this position. So the last two years, we've had more calls and reports of sedimentation events coming off of construction sites, turning the Fraser River the color of chocolate milk. And you know, it, it happens from time to time. You have storm events, you have rain events. You know, this, this is a naturally occurring event at times. But over the last two years, it seems that this has occurred far, far more frequently. And we've had a lot of eyes on the river and a lot of people reporting these events to us. I've seen them myself and I want to make sure to take a minute to mention that the point of me being here is not to point fingers at any one particular project. I've seen these events coming off of at least three different construction site locations and three different active projects going on. There is an open violation process going on with one of the projects with Colorado Water Quality Control Division. And so that's, that is occurring as we speak. But this is more to call attention to an issue and try to make sure that if anything can be done moving forward, that better practices are encouraged or enforced or put into place. Because there's, you know, there's some concerns about, about the health of the Fraser River. So how do I know what's going on with fish populations in the rivers? I have what I call stations that are locations on the river that are representative reaches that I come back to year after year, close to the same date as possible every year, and survey the fish population in those reaches. And I have long-term data sets and I look at trends and make estimates of the fish populations. And that's how we make our management decisions as far as the recreational fishery goes and any stocking. And so I'm here to share information with you on the Safeway Station in particular, which is my longest running station up here in the Fraser Winter Park area. And it's about 650 feet of river right here, right behind Safeway. And we've been surveying it for 17 years now. Now, when I say survey a fish population, how do we do that? We do it by putting electricity into water. This is an electrofishing crew. I recruit volunteers to help fill out the crew. It takes about at least 12 of us to do this. There are five people with electrodes there collecting fish. We put just enough electricity into the water to stun the fish, but not enough to injure them. And we collect as many fish as we can and do statistics on the, on what we gather and make estimates of what the fish population is. This Safeway Station that I'm going to show you data from, so you know, fish do have seasonal movements and matching the dates is very important. And so this is just by way of showing that since 2009, I've surveyed the Safeway site, no later than September 7th and no earlier than August 31st. So really good consistent consistency in the dates over the years here. And so here's the, here's the real take home message. In 2021, we got the, this is just, this is the total number of sculpin that we captured in this reach. 21, we got less than, well, right about half of, or a little less than half of the lowest record number of sculpin that we had ever captured before. We view sculpin as a Keystone species, as an indicator species of the health of the ecology of the river for reasons that I explained. And this is a concern. And I don't want to be too hasty to jump to conclusions about, you know, correlation does not necessarily mean causation. However, you know, it is also a concern that we've, we've fielded more calls than we ever have before in the last two years about these sedimentation events coming off of construction project sites. So how relevant is this number? 56 sculpin collected. So in this 17-year data set, the average has been 247 at the Safeway site. This is before 2021 numbers, 247, standard deviation is 113. I don't want to get too far into the weeds on statistics, but the question is how relevant is this number? And the only way to discuss that is, you know, to look at the statistics of it a little bit. The 95% confidence interval on these samples would be 60. And so that means that if, if, if you imagine if the, if the true number of sculpin there is, is static over time and it does not change at all and all the variation you're seeing there is error, is just error. If you went out and did this survey 1,000 times, 950 of those times, it would be within 60 of that average of 247. In other words, the likelihood of coming up with only 56 sculpin is, is very, very low. And it clearly means that there are definitely less fish there. No, no question. They're a fast recovering species. Their, their effective lifespan is really only three or four years old. They start spawning at, at two years old. They can, their numbers can rebound quickly. And you can see that in, in, you know, years when we go from 176 to 431 or 122 to 249. So, you know, they, they can rebound quickly. They're short-lived fish. The, the other reason why this is a big concern is I just overlaid the peak flows of Granby. So this is just a surrogate for water year type, okay? If you remember, 2014 was a huge, huge water year on the Fraser. Likewise, 2012 was very, very low. So the, the relationship that we see with sculpin numbers in our rivers is in low water years, when we don't really have very much of a peak runoff at all, the numbers shoot through the roof because they're a sedentary species and they're not very strong swimmers. And they get, one of the biggest limitations on their population is they can get washed out by a big runoff. And so likewise, in a huge water year like 2014, that was our previous record low number because the huge scouring runoff of that year had knocked sculpin numbers back quite a bit. However, 2021 was not a high water year, as we all know. It was a relatively low water year. If, if, if 2021 was another 2014 in terms of the intensity of the runoff, I wouldn't be here talking to you. I would have chalked up this 56 fish that we got at the Safeway Station to another exceptionally high water year and watched for recovery, you know, in the subsequent years. However, that's not a factor. We can't, we can't, we can't account for it in terms of a high runoff year. And this is just kind of to illustrate concerns going forward. We know, we all know that these construction projects are not slowing down. I just, the only reason I put this here is because, caught me by surprise the other day. I saw there's a sign right out here, you know, the Riverside condos coming soon, a new construction project right along the river. And the, the bottom line is we would like to see construction practices improving. And I'm just here to.
John, I'm in charge of that project, so.
Okay.
Surety, we'll do a good job.
Okay, I figured somebody in this room would have a close connection to that project. And, but I mean, that's not the only one and I'm not trying.
That's, that's all right, John. But yeah.
It's not my intention to cause that one out.
Do best practices with sediment control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there, you know, there, there are many other projects that we all know are moving right along. And so I see it as my role to share this concern and communicate it to anybody who has interest and to field any questions.
Thanks, John. Very informative.
Yeah, very informative.
So sediment control is part of the building process and code. So building code violation, if it's not put incorrectly, correct? Yeah, and I think.
Yeah, but it's also part of the improvement agreement and we collect surety on erosion control.
So hopefully with a new code compliance officer. I know the building department's pretty well maxed out, just trying to keep up with inspections on structures. But this might fit well into the code compliance officer's duties to really examine these corrosion control, best management practices and construction sites. So it's just a suggestion.
I have a question. Might I ask a question, ma'am?
Yeah, jump up and introduce yourself.
Hi, John. Nice to meet you. Clark Lipscomb, thanks for the presentation. I have a question, generally speaking, and I do construction. In all construction sites that I've been in up here, detention ponds are put in first, water quality ponds are put in first, et cetera. And obviously you guys are well aware that I'm dealing with some of this stuff. But a lot of our roads around here are dirt roads. And Old Town Fraser is an example, Parmigan, Winter Park Ranch. None of that has any detention facilities, none. No water quality, no detention. So like this is a good example. You didn't show, she showed one from the construction site. That's County Road 72. That's water coming off that road, Elk Creek. That's coming down the County Road 72 construction. That's a new construction project three years ago, three years ago. There's no water quality, no detention. That was a county project. It's a county project. Yeah. Same day, here, these are the sides, that's water coming off.
So, hey Clark, hey Clark.
Yeah.
Hey Clark.
Yeah.
So you're showing one.
Yeah, sorry guys, but basically the point is.
For a good conversation.
Okay, I apologize. Point is, don't think it's fair to single out construction when.
Part of the problem.
Is probably a very small part of the problem, given the detention facilities and water quality facilities and all the things that are designed into our projects today. Okay? And they're also, when there is a problem, they're typically intermittent and they're fixed very quickly. Okay? But I've seen Eisenhower running brown in front of the taco stand over here in the middle of summer. And that's going straight in the Fraser River, guys. So let's be real about, there's a much broader picture here. And I heard Ed at last meeting target Rome, rendezvous, Grand Park and something else, specifically relating to the sculpin issue. And I think if you want to really address the issue, then let's address all of the problems, which includes the dirt roads, all of the, you know, roads in town and the neighborhoods in town that don't have detention ponds, don't have water quality ponds, where you have mass runoff events that go straight in the Fraser River. Okay? I've cleaned out our detention ponds. They worked. So I just think that's an important factor that keeps getting lost. It's lost in John's presentation. It was lost in what Ed said at the last meeting when I was here. And I want it brought to light that there's a bigger picture. If we want to really focus on the health of our rivers, then let's really focus on the health of our rivers and all of the causes that are polluting it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
I think it'd be worth a really close look at our stormwater system. I don't think it's really been examined that I know of. And, and see what, what we can do to help control some of that sediment before it leaves our stormwater and goes into the.
Yeah, the drain pans run straight into Elk Creek, right behind Murdochs.
What's that?
The drain pans.
Yeah.
Dump right into Elk Creek, right behind Murdochs.
We have a few stormwater pipes and we've got a big one that comes out from the front of Sharkies. So I don't know where that dumps exactly, but.
The other thing I noticed too is all the snow piles are closer to the edges of creeks.
Yeah.
So all of our gravel and salt that we're plowing off parking lots and roadways. And like over here on East, it's been pushed to the back of that lot, that snow melt directly down in the Fraser River. Carry with it everything that has.
The Safeway pile tends to end up over there right on the river too.
Yeah.
It's a sign right next to the river that says snow storage.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I mean. Okay. Public and private, we look at, and we can of course have more control over the public part of it, more responsibility.
A nice presentation.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
Comments or questions for John?
I just had a quick thank you for, for John and your colleagues and CPAW. We have recently applied for a Parks and Wildlife grant for a non-motorized trail within Cousins Ranch Open Space. And we haven't heard the final news, but I'm, I feel that it's pretty good news that we're going to hear, but the date is March 10th. And I really wanted to give a shout out to you and your colleagues for helping us along with that and meeting with us and figuring out the best alignment for a new trail in Cousins Ranch Open Space. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having me, thanks for the invite.
Yeah. Casey, you have some direction on, things we can look at first. Okay, next is Middle Park Medical Center update.
Everybody.
Quick introduction.
Yeah, yeah. I got a presentation too. I want to share my screen. Or Cam. Ared Zavitch. All right.
Hi, everybody. Welcome, my name is Andy Rizavitch. I am the Director of Middle Park Medical Foundation. Um, I've got my crew with me here. We have Jason, Jason Cleckler, CEO of Little Park Health, Ray McKendrick, who is Director of Plant Ops, Tom Coburn, CMO, and Tiffany Frytag, who is Director of Marketing and Communications. Uh, we're here to talk to you about the Fraser Medical Campus we're going to build out behind the Foundry, uh, off the King's Crossing Road. And I just want to talk to you about what it is and some of the benefits we believe it's going to bring to the community around here. So. First, what it is, is a two-story medical campus that's uh, thirty thousand square feet. On the first floor, it's gonna have an emergency department, four emergency exam rooms, two trauma bays, two licensed inpatient beds, imaging services, radiology, and lab services. The second floor will be shelled out for services needed by the community as determined as we grow and as we move forward. So I want to showcase three different ways that this is gonna support our area locally. First, local healthcare, uh, then the growth support, and then economic support. Uh, so locally, uh, right now, we don't have a twenty-four-seven emergency department in the east side of Grand County, and that does pose some problems. So if you get hurt around here, um, you gotta make a decision. Do you go down the hill, or do you go, do you go over the hill, or do you go to Granby? Um, if you decide to go over the hill, it's gonna cost a little more, and not only in monetary, but uh, time as well. Uh, you know how that that goes. And I also want to talk about the synergy this campus will bring amongst a few things. First, it will, it'll strengthen our system so that everybody in Grand County will have quality healthcare right out their front door. Uh, something that, you know, there's there's some here on the east side, but there's not, there's not a really robust system here. And uh, so we put that in place and that strengthens the entire system. So the east and the west side all have it all at their fingertips, so we think that's really cool. It provides a channel for local people to get the healthcare they need. You know, if you break, break your leg skiing in Winter Park, again, you gotta make that decision, go over the hill or go to Granby. We prefer you go to Granby, but you don't have a space to just roll right into and get immediate care. And I want to share a personal story that just happened to us. We recently had a baby, and three weeks after it, I went right back to work and my wife fell skate skiing and broke her wrist. Luckily, Middle Park Health and Dr. Wilson fixed her the very next day. So she was on the mend immediately, and we were able to get, she was able to get right back into taking care of two kids. We have a two-year-old and now an infant. Uh, and you can imagine the the complications that would pose if she had to travel far away to to do that. Now she's healed up pretty well, and she's, she's rocking it. Uh, that was a huge help, but that's just one small example of how Middle Park helped us out and how getting into the right channels can help others like that, because it's about the patients. Uh, another channel that I want to touch on is mental health. With the proper channels, you know, somebody rolls into the emergency department struggling with mental health, this is the right there to get into the mind springs or our behavior health system with Sue Johnson. Our CEO, uh, Jason, has a personal passion with mental health and has spent a lot of his career in mental health, and he could probably talk to you a little bit more about that. Um, and also people that may be abusing substances, you know, right now, if you get picked up, hammered in Winter Park, you know, wake up in jail. It'd be much better if somebody was struggling with issues and was abusing substances and try to help. Wake up in our services, um, you know, in one of those inpatient rooms and be able to get the the uh, the treatment they need right away. Uh, just being close to help. The overall message here is it provides supporting services and referrals for independent providers where we can work together uh, for the benefit of the patient. Case in point, uh, Dr. Wilson fixed my wife's hands. He doesn't work for Middle Park House, but we worked together to get her fixed up, so we're all better now. Um, I didn't have to miss work and our family can move on. So it's it's little synergies like that that really make me feel like this project is such a great thing. Next, I want to talk about the growth. Uh, obviously, population is increasing here, there, and everywhere. Uh, another statistic that you may not know is that in five years, thirty percent of, in five years, we'll see a thirty percent increase in the retirement population of Grand County. Uh, so obviously, there's gonna be an obvious need for more medical services around here as well. It leads to shortages, housing, employees, capacity, uh, fresh powder on a weekday. My joke. What we don't want it to lead to is a shortage in healthcare. And so this project aims to prevent exactly that. And finally, economic support directly is going to provide about thirty new jobs in the area. Indirectly, nationally, every dollar a hospital spends supports about two dollars in additional business, business spending. And every job a hospital creates supports about two jobs in the economy. Those are national numbers. And then locally, this will help with capital retention in the area. Obviously, if people are spending their money on healthcare here, that money stays in the community to go towards other things as opposed to them going over the hill where it's all lost on on food, on lodging, on healthcare. Uh, so this will help keep that here, um, as well as the tourism side. You have a family that's here for a week and someone gets hurt, uh, we may be able to get them in, fix them right up, and the whole family doesn't have to leave. And, you know, if they stay here, they keep spending money here, they keep having a good time here, and hopefully they come back. Finally, I want to talk about the cost and the funding of this project. It's primarily going to be funded through the USDA. Uh, Middle Park Health is on the hook for nine million dollars of it. They've already uh, spent about four million on land acquisition and architect and design fees. So that leaves five million that remains. Uh, this is where I come in with Middle Park Medical Foundation. Uh, we believe this is a great opportunity to engage the community with a capital campaign to try to help raise money for this project, mainly so that uh, Middle Park Health can continue to flourish and grow and serve the patients without being burdened by the financial, the financial burden of of building a new hospital. Um, so there are a few paths that we're going down. Uh, our capital campaign is going to be kicked off with our annual fundraiser bash, which is coming up on March fifth at Headwaters Event Center. I'll pass you out some nice invites before I leave. Uh, that's a good time. The Fraser Project is an enterprise zone contribution project, which means you get an extra tax credit through the state of Colorado. Donations are eligible up to twenty-five percent extra tax credit. Um, and I can answer more questions about that too, which is, is a great, great project. And yeah, the town of Winter Park has committed to, or has um, uh, has committed to uh, kick in fifty thousand dollars to this project already, so they're they're behind it. Which brings me to a couple of questions for you guys. Number one, I want to know if you would endorse this and support this project, it was something you believe you'd get behind. And number two, is this something that you would consider uh, supporting financially? I don't have to answer now, but it's something I do want to think about, because we are doing a capital campaign. Uh, and we do believe this is a big deal within the whole entire county. Uh, so I appreciate your time. I welcome any questions for me or the rest of the Middle Park House crew. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Questions, comments?
I have a question. I know there's no birthing center on this side of the county. Uh, is there a plan to put one in here, or?
Uh, not right now. I know the only plans we have to put in here is the the AD, and then that top floor could be a whole lot of things. You know, birthing is is a harder issue. It has to, a lot to do with volumes, and obviously, I just went through it uh, not too long ago. So it's something I care about, but it's not in the plans for the first floor.
And Andy, you said there would be a mental health facility in this, or?
No, I just saying it provides a channel to get patients to where they they need to be. Something the foundation is considering down the road, and something we've been talking about is hopefully getting into how we can help us mental health. We don't have any programs stood up with it for that yet, but we do recognize that there's a big need for that here in the county.
And then could you go back to the map again?
This one?
Yeah, so point out the, um, you're on the corner of Grand Park Drive there, is that?
So we have King's Crossing right here.
Oh, King's Crossing, so you're behind that.
Yeah, so here's Pine Tree Plaza.
Right, Pine Tree, right behind Pine Tree Plaza, gotcha. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it's right on the edge.
King's Crossing Road is the boundary.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to let the board know that this did come through Planning Commission and received approval for a site plan in, um, I want to say it was April of twenty. So, um, you know, they already have town of Fraser approval for this, for those that are on Planning Commission. I know you know that.
I'd love to pass out these invites for everybody.
Thanks.
It's really exciting. It'll be a huge asset. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Fun, thank you very much.
Appreciate you all coming now. It's nice to see faces in our building.
I know.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. We are now at Public Hearing and Possible Action, Waldron Minor Subdivision, conditional use permit.
Yes, hello. Um, there is not. So for the record, the notice was in the paper fourteen days in advance of tonight's hearing. Um, in light of some things that have come up within the last forty-eight hours, I have received a request from the applicant Marion Walden to continue the public hearing tonight because um, one of the major items is that all of the neighbors haven't received their notification due to the slow postal service that we're currently dealing with. And I think it would be inappropriate to conduct the public hearing tonight. She has asked for a continuance until April sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue, please?
I'll move to continue the public hearing until April sixth, please, sixth.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Discussion in possible action regarding ordinance four eight six regarding criminal. Is that chief?
Yep, that's me. My memo should. My memo should be pretty self-explanatory, but basically, uh, Senate Bill two seventy-one, which was passed last year, also known as the Misdemeanor Reform Bill, has uh, put some mandates on municipal courts as far as the maximum fine they can charge. And those of you that have been on the the board for a while, remember when we raised them two or three years ago because of the legislature passed a bill while they're moving them back down to a maximum fine of a thousand dollars. And it's a little bit of a, uh, I don't know, it's a little ironic because uh, even back when they were a thousand dollars before, nobody ever got that amount. And nobody ever certainly got the two thousand six hundred and fifty dollar. But uh, what I'm requesting not tonight is, or recommending is passage of this ordinance so that we can uh, reduce the mandatory maximum fines or the maximum fines in our municipal court back down to a thousand dollars.
Questions?
I guess I'm curious as to, like, why, why bother? If if we only, if we don't even get up to a thousand anyway, then why not have the ability, but still never really use it?
Well, because the legislature passed a bill requiring that, mandating that the maximum that could be charged is a thousand dollars. And that wouldn't necessarily apply to home rule communities like Winter Park is, but Winter Park has also passed an ordinance making the maximum fine a thousand dollars.
Okay, I think I was reading this backwards. So you want it, do you want the maximum to be two thousand six fifty?
No, it already is two thousand six hundred and fifty.
We have to be in compliance, we have to lower it.
Lower it.
Down to a thousand. Let's see.
The statute say that, so we can't, we can't charge a greater fine than what the state said we can charge.
Okay, a motion to accept or approve.
Yes.
Is it, I mean, do we even need to, for a statutory? Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance four eighty-six regarding criminal penalties, reduce the maximum fine to a thousand dollars.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Next is open forum. This is when anybody from the public.
You skipped, you skipped Katie. No, we took it off because there was a, here's some, more to come, so it's off the agenda for tonight. Oh, okay.
This is more gibbous, yeah.
I'm sorry, just preparing, when, when should we reschedule that?
Um, I'll have to let you know, because I don't know.
Okay, back to open forum. Anybody from the public can address the board at this time, and we'll start here in the building. Come up to the podium, let us know your name, and if you live in the town of Fraser or not, and you get three minutes. If anybody here would like to address the board. Okay, anybody online? There's no actual. Okay. We'll move on from open forum. To an executive session. I'll update, yeah, sorry. Anybody have any updates?
No, but I'll, uh, one come on and make it's, we got that update from C-Dot on what they've done over the last two years, six months, or whatever, year and a half. It would be nice to see our town, like, Russell's Department, Catherine, here's what we've done in the last month, last quarter. So when people ask us, we can tell them what they, what we've accomplished as a town. So it'd be nice to have a consensus update, just a thought.
I know Ed's been doing those weekly updates that have been really useful.
Yeah, people ask like, you know, what has Russell done this week? What has Catherine done? You know, we don't know what, we don't follow them around, so we don't know. It'd be nice to be able to come back and say, yeah, Catherine proved the hospital and worked on the Willow's apartments and did this. And.
Shouldn't want to add a whole lot more.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's, we should talk about that at our retreat after.
There you go.
After our next election.
Sure. Thanks for coming. It's an exciting project, will be a great asset. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any cheat sheets for the executive session.
Okay.
A couple of things. First of all, Kent Whitmer is still with the grant, number one, uh, their board meeting, we'll hear afterwards. He needs to be part of that first executive session.
Maybe for Popemore?
Well, if I can get Justice Jean Reardon to let him know that we reverse that order, so I, if you allow me to give him a call.
This one will be fast.
I wrote it by text, but. This is before we move some things off the canvas.
We're gonna go in a minute. Thirty seconds, he's gonna answer the phone.
Things are kind of rolling, more on a, on a level. So.
Thanks for moving on pretty quick. If you're able to jump on.
Sure.
Okay, so while we're still on the record, if we can.
Oh.
Go ahead, make a motion to go into executive session.
Number one.
Number two.
Number two. Okay.
Yeah.
I move, um, I I moved to enter into an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four E regarding negotiations, including town manager Ed Cannon, town clerk, Antoinette McBay, town planner Catherine Trotter, assistant town manager Michael Brack, Joe Hookway, and Jean Reardon.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And then all in favor?
Hi.
And we will have, I mean, our attorney generally says this, but we will have, our attorney will be here representing us, so we will not be recording the executive session.
And we have three minutes?
Okay, let's go to break. We're in.
My second.
All in favor?
We shut her out.
Woo-hoo!